Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday, October 5th at 6:00 PM. For those of you joining us for the very first time in council chambers this evening, you'll find the agenda and supporting documentation on the wall in the little plastic bins by the door where you came in. Help yourself to that information. We are being broadcast live on Channel 28 and this session will be rebroadcast again on Friday at noon, I believe.
10:00 AM?
10:00 AM? This session?
Yes.
Okay, at 10:00 AM. And we are streaming live over the Internet on our website, so you can watch this session again at any point in time. May I have the roll, please?
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Chilton.
Here.
Councilmember Muller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Mayor Saucerman.
Here. May I join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Thank you. No closed session report. Adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have received a request from Scott Lewis representing V Wine Cellar to continue to non-specific date, item number nine on tonight's agenda, which is a design review and use permit amendment for V Wine Cellar.
Thank you.
The copies have been distributed for council and the public.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion carries. Public comment, item six. Anyone wishing to address the council on any matter that is not on the agenda this evening? Any matter that's not on the agenda. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close that, move to consent. Are there any changes or corrections to tonight's consent calendar?
Move for adoption.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion carries. Presentation, Parks and Recreation Department, summer report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. We're proud to be here tonight to give you an update on a few of our summer programs, our aquatics programs at the Yountville Pool, our Camp Wyville, and our YTX team camp, as well as our park and bocce ball rentals. So I'm proud to say that in the three programs that the staff are here to talk about tonight, we served almost 8,000 people, which I think is fairly substantial for the size of Yountville. And I am proud to introduce Lisa Tyler, who was our Parks and Recreation Manager here, Carol Rasmussen, our Recreation Coordinator, and Jennifer Carvillo, Recreation Supervisor. And I'm going to turn it over to them to walk through some of the items that they would like to bring to your attention in our PowerPoint presentation tonight.
Okay, we're going to start out with the Aquatic Department. The Yountville Community Pool opened on Saturday, June 12th, for the 2010 season. The pool is open six days per week and closed on Mondays. It was open 77 days this season with 40 hours per week of programming and 80 hours of swim lessons totaling 120 hours of programming per week. We had a total of seven staff returning from our 20 staff members this summer. We had a mixture of seasoned lifeguards as well as first-time lifeguards to our staffing. This season, there were 5,808 participants attending the community swim as compared to 7,380 in 2009. Daily attendance averaged 144 users. This is a decrease of 1,572 participants, and this can be attributed to the economy and a seasonably cold summer. Our senior swim program had 515 participants as compared to 662 in 2009. Since the senior swim occurs in the mornings from 10 to 12:00 PM, the majority of summer mornings were cold and dreary, which could contribute to the lower participation numbers. Swim lessons were a huge success this summer. We added a fourth lesson session, which increased our total enrollment and offered more class sessions for the public to choose from. Total enrollment for residents was 127, and non-residents were 159, which added up to 286 participants as compared to 210 in 2009. We increased lesson fees this summer to $40 for residents and $46 for non-residents. Classes were eight one-half hour sessions. Our most popular classes were our lower-level tadpole and guppy classes. Parent feedback indicated that parents felt the cost of lessons were reasonable. They liked the class size and organization. We had a very positive comments on all our swimming instructors. They felt the class times were convenient, and we had some requests for some online registration. Here we have the pool revenue summary. We collected $14,154 in entrance fees, $8,603 in family and couple passes, $3,574 in what we call camp and birthday party fees. The concession stand revenue was $7,229. Our junior lifeguard program had six participants this year for a revenue of $290. And all revenues totaled $46,238 this season as compared to $43,861 in 2009. Staff recommendations for our 2011 season: to possibly restructure our swim lesson classes, to create a mixture of classes so that the more advanced lessons are not always offered in the late evening hours, allowing for more variety of times; continue a one-week in-advance swim registration signup; consider possible lesson fee increases; consider increasing entrance fees, our last fee increase was in 2008; keep the family couple price passes to remain the same since we raised them this year; continue our toddler time program; and consider offering lap swim once again if participation outweighs the staffing costs. We offered a new program this summer called Toddler Time. This was for younger non-swimmers and their parents to enjoy the activity pool during swim lesson time. It was held on Wednesday and Friday evenings from 4:00 to 6:50:00 PM. Our total attendance was 539 participants. Our parent feedback indicated that they enjoyed this time very much and liked having the ability to be able to take their younger siblings who were not in our swim lessons in the activity pool during the swim lesson time. Staff feels this helped promote our swim lessons for when those children are of age for lessons, and this program also served a public need. In closing, our program revenue for the pool from May through September was $46,238, and program expense was $63,382, which is approximately a 74% cost recovery rate. Does the council have any questions for me regarding the aquatics program this summer?
Yeah, can I start with a question about the budget? And first of all, 74% cost recovery rate is terrific, especially compared to past years. The predicted budget of $125,000 versus an actual of 63, can you explain that?
Well, keeping in mind that this budget will go into next season through May and June, so we still have the startup for our next season plus all of June, so that's not the whole budget.
So do we expect that we'll use that 125?
No.
How much of it? Approximately?
Yeah, maybe 20% or 20,000.
Okay. So the cost recovery, if we take the whole year, probably won't be 74, it'll be closer to 50 or so.
Which would still be a significant increase from just about the mid-30s that we were at prior.
I understand that, okay.
And we attribute that savings to we're really being strategic in staffing and the number of staff to children ratio in our lessons as well.
Another cost factor is typically we experience a little bit more cost each spring with the startup. You know, that's where we've got heavier chemical, training, public works maintenance, equipment check, things like that. So the good news is it's a, I think it's a sustainable trend. I also will point out that I'm very pleased with where our staff has taken the program, but to a certain point, we will plateau, and I don't mean that in a negative, it's just that a municipal swimming pool is going to require a significant public subsidy, and we've talked about that before. You know, I think we will get to a program level and a staffing level, and you know, if we can get to the 60%, 65% cost recovery effort, that would be really good. But to fully cost recover, people aren't going to pay $15 an entry. So, excuse me, I just want to set that in, is I think we've got a very good model for our staff to build off of. They're taking good feedback, and I think you can see the trends from the previous years where we actually in some ways did better by being, as Lisa said, in some amount that more strategic with the hours, staffing, and what we have. Hopefully, a little warmer weather would be helpful, too.
Steve, I have another question as well. Have we, these, a large percent seem to be non-residents. Have we considered talking to the county or perhaps the city of Napa and doing some partnerships like you're doing in some of the other programs?
Well, I think the difficulty in that, especially around aquatics programs, is that there's already contracts in place around, especially with the city of Napa, I can speak for them, and also Calistoga operating their own pools. But we're always looking for ways to partner. Lisa's actually attending a meeting later this week with all the aquatics operators in the valley to discuss summer programming, and that always leaves the door open for potential partnerships. We did definitely benefit from the city of Napa this year. They drastically reduced their aquatics programming, and we, in turn, I believe, reaped the benefits of that. We had, as you could see, about half of our lessons were non-residents, and although we didn't track that as accurately with recreational swim time, we estimate that about half of our family passes were also non-residents. So we're drawing from Napa, and I believe that's what's helping to bring that cost recovery percentage up from previous years, is really marketing to those non-residents.
And what about the county? Because do you have any idea how much are county versus city?
We haven't really looked specifically at that data, but it's something that we can try to go back and take a look at, as far as who falls into the county and who are our actual Napa City residents or Calistoga or St. Helena residents.
It might just give you some leverage with the county. And one other thing, I noticed there was one comment about online registration for that. Was that just one person? Is that going to cost more than it would really benefit the community?
It was more than one person, but it wasn't a large degree of people. But we have looked into some online registration, but we are working on our software systems right now to see if we can be able to do something like that eventually.
One of the concerns that staff has is we have a fairly fixed number of online registration opportunities, and we need to make sure that the investment is, makes sense from a cost standpoint. And while it may make sense from a service and somebody wants it, if we have, you know, 300 transactions and the software costs $30,000, that's not a good investment for the town right now. So we're looking at that. We're doing some, you know, staff's going to do some research on various programs, and we're also going to see if there's some opportunity to improve our functionality with, you know, either online, send stuff back, and do some things that we can do to improve that, short of a more sophisticated online registration. But trust me, staff's got that on their list, and we're working to support that. But there does, you know, in today's environment, we really do have to look at cost recovery as well, or cost avoidance in some cases.
I had a question. Sam, just to follow up a little bit on the Napa situation, I know you're pretty familiar with it. It doesn't surprise me that we did get some people from them, and it appears that, you know, the same problems that they had this year are going to continue next year. Is there a way you can more, how should I say it, market our programs, if you will, down there? If you don't want to, they don't want you, we'll take you.
Well, we are, our team just met for a full day a couple weeks ago, and one of the things we talked about was some of our marketing strategies and reallocating some of those dollars by, you know, having some savings from not producing as many brochures, so maybe going to a quarterly recreation guide, but then using those funds to do some bulk mailing to direct north Napa neighborhoods. We're also working on some website, ways of marketing through website, and building up our email lists. We've been utilizing this summer the Napa Moms Group, which is about 500 families on a Yahoo listserv, so we were actually marketing to Napa through that as well. So we're definitely working on that. And through the post office bulk mailing, you can directly target certain neighborhoods. So we're doing research right now on that. It's very much like war plotting on a map. You know, you look at demographics and income levels and that sort of thing, so we are strategizing on that, definitely, in all areas, not just aquatics.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, I will just follow up on one thing. Sam, I think you just mentioned the emailing, and I think maybe even look at expanding it out into some of the social networking, Facebook and others, because we're talking about families and children that are dialed in on that, and it's not going to cost the town any more than what you're doing already, so it just might not hurt.
No, that's a great suggestion. We're actually gathering information on putting some policies in place prior to bringing that to the town manager's desk for approval.
It'll be on his list, then.
Yes.
I mean, we talked about in some cases, no cost. The only thing that I'm going to talk, staff resource and allocation is a cost, so we need to make sure when we look at social media, it sounds really simple, but it needs to be well thought out and executed, and if we're going to do that, you know, it doesn't happen by itself. So we have a lean staff, and if we're going to do it, we need to make sure we do an assignment. And that's something we've been discussing a little internally, is how do we, you know, how do we start? Couple things that we're really excited about is, one, we need to make better use of Nixle. You know, it's an opportunity for, again, to us promote, get people. And one of the things that staff's very, very excited about is our new website enhancement is going to include e-notifier, which is a service where people will be able to subscribe and pick out types of information they would like to get from the town. So we really hope that in January, February, you know, early 2011, we'll be able to roll that out, and people will be able to choose agendas, press releases, parks and rec information, and you know, they'll be signing up, and it's not us having to manually remember to put everybody in that, you know, somebody said. So we're, I think we're going to be working on some of that. And the social media, we chew on that one.
Well, I also think there's an opportunity. You already have volunteer staff, teenagers that are doing, you know, support roles already. They could easily be the ones that are taking an email that's already done and posting it or something like that. Just, it might be fun for them, interactive, they learn, get trained, all that.
We just need to research our protocols and get that understood so that we don't have an inappropriate.
True.
Message distributed.
All right, Camp Wyville.
Okay. We have just completed our 17th year of summer camp here in Yountville. We had an amazing summer, and this year, our theme was Up in the Air. Last year, if you remember, we were under the sea. This year, we went up in the air, and it was amazing, all the things you can do with Up in the Air. This year, Camp Wyville, we offered eight weeks of summer camp. Our average attendance was 38 campers a day, and with 42 residents and 58% were non-residents, again, we pulled from north Napa. Our expenses, as you can see, were, okay, for 2010, it was $26,000, our revenue $36, with a cost recovery of $138, which is significantly less than our, as far as our expenses and revenue, because of the split with the YTX program being run at the community center and not part of our program. So we, so that shows a difference. Okay, so with the Up in the Air theme, we did some amazing field trips. We went to the Napa Airport, and we checked out some of the really fancy air flights, all the different things. We all stood back and tried to figure out who was famous that was on these airplanes. It was really fun. We went to the museum in San Francisco. We discovered the Graham Water Park in Vacaville, which was really fun. Of course, Six Flags is always huge. The Pruitt Water Park was always fun, and the Conquer Jungle, which is our big pizza arcade. The kids love these field trips, so we, a lot of them we repeat every year because they're favorites. Okay, so this year, we decided, we were working together, we worked with the Tug McGraw Foundation and the Veterans Home, and we did groundbreaking, and we planted this amazing garden up at the Veterans Home. It's called, we planted the tomatoes and chili peppers, and we planted a lot of different things while learning about healthy living. They were able to actually get in, get dirty, haul dirt. We made a couple of scarecrows, we did some birdhouses, so we did some fun art out there as well. In fact, last Friday, we were able to go out and pick our tomatoes and chili peppers, and they were put into our chili for the chili cook-off. So we were excited. So the kids got to see what the benefits were, and so they were really excited when there was actually a winning involved with our chili. So that was cool. Some of our key activities, we did work with the Napa County Library, and we had a reading program. We did, we kept track of the reading over the summer. The kids were able to actually turn their lists of books that they had read into their teachers, and so they were recognized on several levels. We did, we collaborated with the Napa Valley Museum. Pat Alexander did an amazing job telling us all about some of the history here in Yountville. And of course, the highlights are our Yountville Pool visits. We visited twice a week. The kids love it. The walk up there sometimes on those warm days, a few warm days, but they love the trolley rides at the, on our Friday visits to the pool. And then, of course, we were up there at the pool, so we were able to visit the brain garden and do our little gardening. And, and I believe that was it. Are there any questions or comments?
Well, good evening. I'm Jennifer Carvillo, the Recreation Supervisor for the Parks and Recreation Department. It's a pleasure being here this evening, and I oversaw the staff of this summer YTX program. The summer YTX program separated from the traditional Camp Wyville program, moving to their new home at the community center and their team room, where they piloted the program out of, averaging 14 teens per day for a seven-week program. We found that teenagers, as soon as they get out of school, they need a little week to sleep in around the house and get some chores done and get settled with their new summer schedule. So we started a week after the summer camp, Camp Wyville. Some of the exciting activities that they did is they went to sky-high trampoline, they did some extreme jumping there with the teenagers, and it was an amazing facility. I got to go there recently with a family field trip myself, and there's just amazing trampolines on the walls, on the sides. They played dodgeball. It was really safe and fun and got a lot of energy out for them. As you can see, teenagers, they need dedicated staff. They need staff that can listen and be a good ear for them, as well as enrich them and teach them some life skills. We're their second home, so our staff, as you can see, was really involved with them and having fun times, also doing some art classes and helping to get some activities and decorations ready for the fall harvest party coming up here. The summer climated with a two-night stay in Santa Cruz. We partnered with the city of St. Helena to help keep the costs down for our residents, and the trip was a huge success. We did, through fundraising measures, we were able to provide some scholarships to offset the cost for families that couldn't otherwise provide this type of activity for their families. The campers built their own tents, they cooked over the fire. We switched, where St. Helena made us breakfast, and we made them dinner, and we actually brought the food down to the beach, and we cooked right there on the boardwalk. It was just amazing. Some of the teens had never even roasted a marshmallow, so the experience that we got to provide for our student, our population of teens here was really truly enriching. The program, in the calendar year, October, we had a total of 51 grants, which amounted in $3,597 were awarded, and we were able to, I'm sorry. Please skip that. Oh, sorry, went to the wrong one, sorry. We were able to have the expense for this program being $8,621.52, with a total revenue of $12,080.36, with a cost recovery of 140%. Some of the awesome activities that we did were Iron Chef. Of course, the kids are into the culinary with these lovely restaurants here in town, so we had anything from taco salad to lasagna and all kinds of, we definitely got to be the judges of that, and that was pretty fun, to see all the different foods that they can make there at the community hall. They had movies, they had dodgeball, they had Six Flags, and again, they liked sky-high trampolines so much that they wanted to go back again at the end of the summer. They said, forget the rope course, can we do the sky-high again? So we went back to sky-high. A great program, and is there any questions?
Does council have any questions for staff? Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, and just to recap, our park and bocce court rentals for the summer, in 2010, we had 144 total rentals. 78 of those were residents, 66 were non-residents in our parks. And in our bocce courts, we had 36 total, 23 residents, 13 non-residents. So as you can see, our park and bocce rental, pretty much the same as last year, a little bit of a variance. We also approved 32 special event amplified sound film and block party permits, down a little bit from last year. And in our youth subsidy program, which, if you're not familiar, we fundraise for that fund every year, which provides a cost subsidy to families in need to be able to participate in our recreational programs. In 2010, this year, we released 40 grants totaling almost $4,000, which, in number of grants, was down from last, down from last year, but in total, dollar amount was actually up. So families utilized those funds to the full extent they could. They're approved quarterly for a dollar amount, and so obviously, over the summer, there was a need there for families to be able to participate, mostly in summer camps and some of our aquatics programs as well. So in conclusion, we feel like this summer was extremely successful in creating community through our people parks and programs, and I really appreciate the council and public's time tonight in hearing our summer recap, and we look forward to coming back to you seasonally and letting you know how things are going.
Good, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I'll make a couple of comments. First of all, because both of my children participate heavily in the pool and summer camp, not YTX yet, I think both of those this year went particularly well. So thank you, Carol, first of all, and Lisa and everybody with the pool. Lindsay was great, ran the pool again. Hopefully, we can keep her forever. And I think, you know, we talk about this often, and it's interesting to see in the data year after year, is a couple of these programs are highly supported by non-residents of Yountville. And I think it's, I always have the temptation of saying, you know what, we've got all these non-residents, let's kind of sock it to them and get some money out of them, but if they don't come, then, as somebody said, our cost recovery becomes very, very bad, and I don't think we can afford to have these programs. So the converse of that, which is marketing ourselves, and I get emails from the city of Napa Recreation Department, because my, we participated in one program, and for years, we, I look at it, I think it's interesting, but they're doing it, and we should absolutely do it, too. And it provides such a great service, not just for our residents, and not for non-residents, but really supporting our school and the families and making this, this is a high-cost place to live, and this helps a lot in making it more family-friendly and accessible. So thank you very much.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this presentation? Okay, seeing none.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Item nine has been pulled from the agenda. Item 10, Napa Valley Tourism Improvement District. Do we have a staff report?
Um, yes. Briefly, Mayor and Council, this is a quick update on the work plan that the Napa Valley Tourism Improvement District, Yountville Local Oversight Committee, has put together for this fiscal year. In accordance with the management plan and the ordinance that implemented the Napa Valley Tourism Improvement District, the Town Council is to receive the annual work plan. As you may recall, in our earlier budget, we included the Napa Valley Tourism Improvement Assessment, but since the committee hadn't met, we didn't have an expenditure allocation. So normally, the allocation for the revenue and the expenditures would be done as a placeholder for the budget. The fund is managed by the town as a fiduciary agent, so in this particular case, this is a restricted fund. So the action tonight before you is an informational update on the program and then the initial allocation for the expenditures by resolution, because that was not put in the budget. You'll find you have a revenue slot, and you have in there the identification of the administrative fee, but since the Oversight Committee had not met, it would be inappropriate to put the work plan in. Briefly, we're looking at an estimated budget allocation of $145,167. The priority focus of the Oversight Committee was on expenditures targeted to increasing leisure travel business in our local Yountville lodging properties during our slow season, December through March, and to promote expenditures that generate and support newsworthy public relations efforts and targeted group travel business. With that, they're looking at a winter season extension, which will include a ice rink, carriage rides, and some PR and marketing to associate that. And I do want to point out that, from this particular perspective, part of the focus of the Napa Valley Tourism Improvement District is to create stories, which creates public relations and opportunities. So they're looking at some things that can bring in attention to Yountville, attention to our properties, and that create something new. Second area is a January, February timeline promotion, which is a partnership between the lodging properties and our culinary restaurants, and that will be a movable feast. Third element is participation in the San Francisco Powwow, which is a group international travel, modest support for the Yountville Public Art Walk, and a small contribution towards an exhibit at the Napa Valley Museum. And then, we are also, because we're very, very new, we're also leaving approximately 30,000 unallocated at this time. So very modest work plan, again focused on, you know, four very significant elements. The action before you tonight is to receive the annual work plan and to adopt the resolution establishing the expenditure for the Restricted Tourism Improvement District Assessment Fund 22. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Does Council have any questions? Yeah, I have one. On the Powwow, I know we have our local one here. I think it would be useful, just to make sure that our council knew that this was happening. Maybe they might even want to consider changing their, their date to coincide before or after.
Let me clarify something for you, and I apologize, it's a terminology. This is a international conference of tour promoters and international travel.
Oh, this has nothing to do with Indians, okay.
And it happens to be called the San Francisco Powwow.
Well, I think they can leave their, well, they should still change their date, because there's too much going on on that day, but, all right. So then I need some more explanation for what this is. So what is Powwow exactly?
It's a international, it is a conference where travel tourism promoters, people that are bringing, they're pre-qualified, they're, they're basically the group travel promoters. It's a workshop in San Francisco for Northern California tourism promoters. So, you know, whether you're from Slovenia, Japan, Korea, it's an opportunity for them to become aware of, and in many cases, they book their lodging and a lot of their group activity events. So it's a, it's an important event for, for that type of a segment, and again, that's a one-segment of business.
So my question then would be, are we going to be bringing groups up if they're interested to see, to see Yountville, or are we going to be marketing ourselves at that event, or how's that going to work?
Both.
Okay.
I mean, and what this is, is the $10,000 is the budget allocation for a variety of those things. There will be a Yountville presence at the Powwow, as well as familiarization tours, information, and there will be also partnership opportunities for the lodging and restaurants and other promotional. So again, it's a placeholder budget for those types of activities, and I think it shows you that the Oversight Committee stayed fairly focused, you know, not trying to do too many things with the revenues, but, and also, you know, it'll be a moving, a moving process, and they'll evaluate their success.
I guess my question, it goes back to when this was formed, has to do with whose responsibility is exactly what, and either you, Steve, may know those or Arnold, and one of my questions had to do with the unallocated funds and having a reserve. What if a district like this goes out and commits itself to something and, you know, pays $50,000 and the revenue's coming at 30? Who's left holding the bag in terms of who ultimately has financial responsibility for what this committee does?
Well, I think, first of all, there's very important role when we use the fact that the town serves as the fiduciary agent and as a restricted fund. And in part, it's the town's responsibility and in part of my role to make sure that they're not overencumbered with the revenue. So that's why, when we put the budget together, you're seeing a very conservative structure. Kathleen and I have, the Finance Director, have mapped out what the monthly revenue for the Tourism Improvement District is, and we're ensuring, you know, I will attest to you right now that the projected budget is well under what last year's revenue would have been, because that's exactly what we're concerned with.
Well, I guess I wonder if, at the start, being that being the answer, is if it doesn't make sense to put in some guidelines that will, that the council establishes over time that says that we expect this district to hold, you know, a 20 percent reserve or et cetera. So at some point, something doesn't happen like that, where a decision's made and we've approved a budget, but, I mean, do we ultimately have the ability to say, I'm sorry, you cannot spend that money, if revenues are not matching expenses? But I, that's where I, that's my concern, and maybe just some policies and procedures that the council adopts upfront might make a lot of sense.
Well, I'd say, part of that is in the structure, and it goes back to the management plan that was adopted, and I, I think those are all very prudent. And that's also why I want to remind you all, the Oversight Committee has, myself as a member and a council member. So, you know, we're not left out of the information loop and being able to set that. And, you know, when we crafted that, that was intentional. I mean, part of it is to provide a structure and, in most cases. So I think, you know, you're seeing a fairly conservative, and, you know, the other thing is, they, they can't actually go out and do anything. It requires, in this case, a town signature on an agreement, check policy, they have to sign off minutes. So it's a very, I think these are very good questions, so that people understand that, you know, this process is very structured, and I think, you know, we're going to practice a conservative approach, because we don't want to be having somebody not, not satisfied with the results, and we aren't, you know, we're not signing up for the balance. The other thing is, the plan continues, so what would happen if, on an annual basis, if there was a revenue shortfall, and I'm being very hypothetical here, we would simply adjust the revenue and pay off any outstanding balance when it came in on the following year and restrict the expenditure subsequent. So there are some structures.
When you say "we," who's "we"?
Well, that, as the fiduciary agent, the town does have some ability to say, you can't spend money that you don't have, and that's why I use that term very specifically. We are the fiduciary agent. We can't allow them to encumber themselves into agreements that exceed their capacity.
If I may, Madam Mayor, I'm following up to one of the questions from Councilmember Chilton. In terms of the liability exposure, my recollection, if it serves me correctly, is that these types of joint power improvement districts, the, the community that participates, or the entity that participates in these types of joint powers entities, their exposure to the entity, to the community, or to the town in this instance, doesn't fall into our lap. It's only limited as to the involvement of the revenues that are available to the, to the improvement district.
So, just one other question, since this is the first time we've gone through this. Let's say, in the future hypothetically, that the, you know, that the majority of the committee decided that they wanted to go to some international tourist conference, and it happened to be in Monaco, and they wanted to spend $50,000 and take everybody on a giant boondoggle. Would that be something that the, in approving the work plan, that we could say, I'm sorry, that's outside of your ability to do that, or is it simply because of the way the representation's on the, on the committee? And I'm not suggesting this would happen, but is that something that the committee has the discretion of where these funds go?
Actually, that's a great, and a great question and illustration. That's actually not even an eligible expense, the way the plan's written. That type of, you know, they're not allowed to do that type of stuff. You know, they would have to, the lodging parties would have to attend out of their own, because there has to be a direct nexus to the generation of tourism. So in this particular case, when you go through, and I, I can send everybody back a copy of the management plan, you'll remember, there's a whole outline of eligible expenses, but conference and trade attendance, at that level you're describing, like that's not, not one of the expenses anticipated under the plan.
Well, not, I guess my question shouldn't be as specific as that, is if there's an expense that falls within, does, does the Town Council, this discount council or any future one, have any ability to say, no, you cannot spend money in that way? Or is that's up to the committee?
That is up to the Oversight Committee. That's why we, you don't have a veto on, if there's an expenditure that you don't like, you can certainly share and participate in that discussion, and we can send that back. But as long as the expenditure is within the approval range of the way the enabling management plan, the Town Council doesn't have a pocket veto over, you know, say you wanted, somebody wanted to advertise in Sunset, and somebody said, no, we, we don't have that ability, no.
Thank you.
I would like to add something, too. It just so happened, and when you talk about this Powwow, this, and to your point, it could be in Bangladesh or somewhere next to it. It just so happened, we hit San Francisco, so it was an ideal mix. And I agree, if, you know, if it's in Paris next year, I don't know, you know, but this was sort of fell right in our lap, and I mean, I mean, this is, this is the biggest thing that happens internationally for any kind of tourism thing, so it was very coincidental.
Any questions, Vice Mayor?
I have a question related to coordination with chambers of commerce and the industries. You're talking about kind of tag-teaming with some existing events. The Festival of Lights is listed. What is the local committee doing in terms of coordination, either with the Yountville Chamber or other chambers, to, or are you, to make sure that the schedules are compatible, the efforts are not, you know, dissimilar?
Let me remind everybody, that is a good question. This is a Yountville-centric, this is our Yountville-centric program. The Chamber has a board member on this, and that was deliberately done in the design. So in this particular case, the concept of extending the winter season was done purposely to piggyback on the work effort already in place for the Festival of Lights, build on some of that, try to create, in this particular case, I'll also share, we're trying to create story advertising market in what's considered the drive-up market, which in this case is principally the metropolitan San Francisco Bay Area and Sacramento, so that some of those folks might come up and take advantage of a winner or something like that. Similar market also for the movable feast. And clearly, in our, in our community, the Chamber will be involved in a lot of the organization, the potential management or activity of some of those events, as well as potentially, you know, exercise of various things. But there's strong coordination, so that the planning that goes into these various events and expenditures are not duplicated, and they're not to cross purposes.
The reason I ask is, not so much the Festival of Lights, because that's already a Yountville-centric, but something like the Mustard Festival, that would be following not too far along this timeframe, which is a valley-wide effort that we, I would want the local Yountville effort to be coordinated with that effort if there's any possibility.
Again, I'm going to remind everybody, this is a Yountville-centric. So what this particular committee has done is pick a few things that they felt they could have influence positively. There are 101 things out there that people think are great ideas for expanding tourism. And we also don't want to forget that there is still the broader role in Napa Valley Destination Council, and they have a role in the greater county-wide regional marketing, as well as the statewide. So again, the local Oversight Committee focused on a few programs that they felt were specific and not necessarily in competition with other things that were going on in the rest of the Napa Valley during those periods. So I think your point's well-taken, and, you know, their emphasis of the work plan may change over time a little bit. Certainly, this group's very interested in learning and seeing the evolution of the Mustard Festival, and also, you know, working, you know, in a broad sense, with themselves as partners, with our restaurants as partners, and with the retail community and the Chamber.
I, I just wanted to add on, too, is, if you're really looking at what's happening in the county, we are way out ahead of any of the county or any other jurisdictions. And it's, it's very advantageous here locally, in that if you really look through July, August, or October, roughly half of our TOT happens in. So we pretty well had the money in the bank, you know, so we could move ahead with this, and, which was good, because it, it takes us the advantage of, that we can work it out on this particular, this season, and, and which we need help in the November, December, January, February. So it really worked out fine, and I think you'll see some of the other jurisdictions. One, they don't really have that kind of money, and two, they're, they're not even close to even getting started on this, so. And there's some, I, I'm just going to point to one, only, I know, Steve, but I just wanted to, if you saw in the, in the winter extension, this nephew Christmas holiday themed exhibit, this is a fellow that does all kinds of Christmas caricatures and this type of thing that they're going to have, and what they were talking about is literally having these, where you could have them displayed in a lot of the businesses throughout town. You may have one at the Aunt Bill Deli, the type of thing, and Bowman would say, hey, come on up to your museum, here's the type of thing. So it was really impressive for really a, a small amount of money that they had, so. It was, there was a lot of discussion at one of these, and I think your, boy, those, you know, the proof of the pudding is, do we have more TOT? Do we drive more people during that time? And it's, I wish I could give you an answer, but I certainly can't. Say that we can try to do it.
Well, I will say that, I, I think it's ironic, when I read this, I was really surprised to see the ice rink idea, because I had a lot of people say that to me, and it's almost as a little bit of a joke, but I actually think that's going to be tremendously successful, and hopefully, it's so successful that it goes for longer than three weeks in the future. There's probably not another town of 3,000 people that's not in Canada that will have an ice rink. So I think that, I think that's a really great idea, and, and to me, it tells, it says that the committee is working creatively, and I think that will be very tangible in terms of people in town, as opposed to things that always seem kind of intangible. So I agree, I think, I think you seem to be right, because we seem to be way ahead of the game and moving quick, so, good job.
Where it'll, and I don't, I don't see, anyway, it'll be back in that, in the event pavilion, event of the vineage, right, in that grass area is where they're going to set it up. So when you, then it really opens it up for a lot of other things to happen around it, so to speak, and, and I, I agree, it's not ice, though.
Well, it's still, we're going to fix it, all right? Well, it's still, we're gonna pick, so, right? It's skating rink.
I don't know. It's, apparently, it's very close.
As I pointed out, if you're coordinated like I am, you're still gonna fall on your keister when you don't ice or something.
Synthetic, synthetic to me is, it's not 32 degrees outside.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, but apparently, it, it works just like it, so it's great. There it is.
Even better.
Any more questions? Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this matter this evening? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to council for further discussion and/or action.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2920-10, approving receipt, approving receipt and file of the MV TID, Yountville Annual Work Plan Expenditure Budget Allocation, and establishing a budget expenditure allocation in the amount of $139,583 for the Tourism Improvement District Fund 22-1015.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Post, now that motion carries. Thank you. Item 11, Parks and Community Services Commission Art Subcommittee. Staff report, please.
So, the item before you this evening is a request from the Yountville Arts Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Parks and Community Services Commission. The Arts Subcommittee was formed in October 2009 in response to citizen feedback and a desire to increase and enhance the arts in Yountville. This volunteer committee with town staff support has been very busy over the past year. In addition to the nine public outdoor art installations, the Yountville Art Walk, and also the Community Center Rotating Art Gallery with receptions, they have been extremely busy. The committee is also working on several new additions, including a docent-led tour taking place in October, a summer concert series, and an art show for 2011. So, obviously, the pace of the Yountville Arts Committee's progress is pretty profound over the course of a year. They've accomplished a lot, but they've also been out in the community seeking donations, volunteers, and soliciting artists to contribute to this growing art scene. Because of this, the committee feels that marketing materials and business cards that are consistent for all of the committee members is necessary. We feel that this will assist them in building credibility and visibility for the Arts Committee and their mission. The committee also feels that having a logo that is specific to the Arts Committee, and is both artistic and representational of the arts, is a priority. So, along with building credibility and visibility, staff also feels that professional distribution materials will reduce the amount of staff time that's spent fielding phone calls and emails on behalf of the committee, and allowing interested parties to contact them directly. So, the committee is asking for the town council's approval to utilize the Arts Committee logo as presented. It will always be presented along with the town of Yountville's logo, on business cards, letterheads, envelopes, and as they grow, potentially printed materials such as rack cards. So, the logo was presented informally to the Parks and Community Services Commission, and did receive positive feedback. No action was taken from the commission, as it was just part of an informational report. We do have Judith Caldwell here this evening, from the Chair of the Yountville Arts Committee, who's here to answer any questions you may have, or give you any additional information you may need. So, included in your packet were examples of the logo. Staff's recommendation is to approve the logo as presented, and direct staff to work with the Yountville Arts Committee to proof documents before production. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, have any questions for staff? Judith?
Judith Caldwell, 6880 Jefferson Street. Rhonda Vostey, our Public Relations and Marketing Representative, has been extensively working on our outreach program. Not only does she work tirelessly and extend herself to the businesses in our community, but she's also doing this beyond Yountville's boundaries, to the San Francisco area. For example, just this past weekend, she spent hours with her husband, Michael, networking individual artists who were part of open studios. She continues to work with artists with whom she has established strong relationships over a multi-decade period. Rob Wennerberg, our Vice Chair, who's here this evening, has expended also a great deal of energy, planning, organizing, and successfully executing our eventful art receptions. He is in continual contact with wineries, which agree to pour at our events, and hotels that agree to host as coffee stops, for instance, at our upcoming art walk on the morning of October 24th. He, too, speaks with a large number of people continually on behalf of Yountville Arts. Kimberly Cook, our Treasurer, seems to be our committee's guardian angel of specifics and details. For example, over the past couple of months, she has worked extensively with artists, crane and forklift operators, cement pad specialists, and business owners to bring the beautiful artwork to town, keep them in place, and redo them if we have to, like we will have to do this Thursday. As, as your Chair, I am continually invited to attend art-related events and meetings, ranging from announcing concerts on Lincoln Theater stage for July's Festival del Sol, activities to the Napa Valley Arts Council's receptions, et cetera, et cetera. My art column in the Yountville Sun has blossomed into writing articles now for Napa Valley Life Magazine, which will be out this week. This magazine will feature Yountville, not only this issue, but five more issues throughout the year 2010. So, in order to write these articles, Carrie has asked me to meet extensively with people throughout the county. And I'm happy to do this, but ironically, just today, I received a call from Margaret Beaver, and I kept the message, complimenting the Arts Committee of Yountville on its incredibly expansive, beautiful artistic endeavors. And she is known as the grand dame of the arts, so I don't take that compliment lightly. Marita Dornbacher, who has come forward to help raise money for Silver Twist, has invited me to join her, to meet with potential donors. So, at this point, the four steering committee members are an identity. We have worked endlessly, and I will tell you that this is a 24/7, 365-day-a-year job. None of us expected it to be this busy. None of us are saying we don't want to do it. We are a non-stop locomotive train, moving with caution, but in order to continue to be efficient, we really do have to have something in our hand to give to someone when they ask, "How can I reach you?" That's beyond our personal home number. We're feeling, at this point, to, to best serve the town, stationery and cards would be extremely helpful. As you see, in order to share with people that we are not loners, we are definitely a part of the town, on the back of the card, we have put the beautiful logo that's been so loved in the town for decades, with our personal information above it to the right. So, the card, as you can see, is square, and we wanted that because it's uniquely different than the normal horizontal or vertical business card. And we love the words "inspire, gather, and create," because it's who we are. And we like the openness and the quirky element of the contemporary frame, because it, it adds a little bit of mystery, and the colors chosen are very, very now. So, there you have it, and we are hopeful that you, too, will think creatively and approve our choice. Thank you very much.
Does Counsel have any questions? Vice Mayor?
If I, if I may, I'll, I'll take a first stab at this, since I am a member of the Arts Committee, not part of the Steering Committee, but I've been a witness to not only the tireless effort, and I, and there are a few members here tonight, and I commend them, but I do agree that an identity and kind of a validation of this being a town committee, and not just a group of private citizens, is important. And, you know, this is one of those things, this logo, a professional artist donated her time to help the committee come up with this. As Judith mentioned, the colors are not only contemporary, but they also come from our town logo. And so, I think it's, it's appropriate, I think it's going to be helpful, and I, and I speak from example, working with Rob, for example, on some of the receptions, when we reach out to artists, musicians that want to play, we have nothing to say, "Okay, I'll get you Rob's personal email, or I'll get you his phone number, or I'll call," and it's really kind of a cumbersome process. So, I think this is really gonna help streamline, and, you know, heaven forbid that you're actually able to get more done, because it really has been going quite rapidly, but I think in a controlled way, and I haven't really heard any negative comments, you know, especially it being art, people are always gonna have, you know, we could get 1,000 comments about the logo itself, but I think, you know, artists and those dedicated to this effort have, have come to this logo as what they want to represent them, so I support it.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to comment on this matter this evening? Okay. Bring it back to Counsel for further discussion or direction. Councilmember Chilton?
Judith, I want to disagree with something you said very strongly. The new logo does not go with the town logo, because the town logo is terrible. And I would ask that if we approve this logo, that maybe you guys consider at least thinking about different logos that are a little more modern and, and show what Yountville is today for the town of Yountville. Because I don't think what we have today does it. So, I, I think your logo is spectacular, and I, I'll just echo what the Vice Mayor said about the need for it. So, you guys are doing a fantastic job.
Any more comments?
I would just pretty much say the same thing. I mean, talk about going from zero to 60 awful fast. That's certainly what the Arts Council has done, and I think under a controlled environment. So, my hat's off to all you've done, and obviously, all that you have going in the future.
Good. Staff have sufficient direction? I think you have a consensus.
You do actually need to take a minute or two actions.
I'll move that we approve the logo as presented, and direct staff to work with the Yountville Arts Committee to proof documents and produce said documents.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Post, now that motion carries. Thank you. Item 12, request for approval for town to accept World Trade Center 9/11 artifact for display in town. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And to continue the, the theme a little bit here, what I think I'd like to do is read the letter that I presented to the Counsel and staff. This is an effort that a Yountville resident, Sean Larkin, who's here tonight, and I have been working on for about a year, and I think it's a very unique opportunity that we have. So, I'll just quickly read through these comments. "As you may or may not be aware, the steel artifacts from the World Trade Center towers are being given to cities and towns and public safety agencies across the country for memorial displays of 9/11. The project is being led by the New York and New Jersey Port Authorities and the 9/11 Families Association. The Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, which owns the steel, has invited police and fire departments, and mayors, and other city leaders to ask for pieces for specific memorials, and over 1,000 municipalities have done so. Specifically, we have been looking to bring a piece of the North Tower to Yountville in honor of the lives lost from the Windows on the World Restaurant that was atop that tower. Being the culinary capital of the United States, it's a different and unique opportunity that the more traditional, than the more traditional recognition of the public safety people lost that day." Now, Sean points to the many people who have trained locally at the Culinary Institute of America, that went on to work at the Windows Restaurant, giving the Napa Valley another connection to that event. Due to the volume of requests, it's taken the organizers of this project about this year, before actually requesting details of our interest, and how it's going to be delivered and displayed, and we've been working on that effort. What we think, and I took some photographs of some preferred locations, and if those are, are they available to show up on the screen or not? I don't know.
I don't.
Okay. So, they're in the packets, and they're probably very familiar locations to most people. One in particular is where the current orange squares art piece is, the pedestal that the town has built in the passive park, just to the north end of the Community Hall. And obviously, there is a sculpture there now, but we're not sure exactly how long this whole process is gonna take, nor do we know exactly the size and scope of the artifact, so we wanted to just consider that as one location. Another location for a potentially smaller piece would be in the north landscape planter box, the north edge of the Community Center courtyard, adjacent to Community Hall. And the third location that we were looking at is down at Veterans Memorial Park, in particular, kind of the northeast corner, where there's a large grass area right now. It's visible from the street, very visible from the park itself. One concern that we have about that location is that this is a separate, a separate memorial and commemoration from the Veterans Memorial Park. You definitely want to respect the park and not dilute the impact of, of the Veterans Memorial Park. So, the other two, I think, and Sean may want to get up and make a comment about this, are, are leading candidates, but we definitely wanted to bring this to the town council and get feedback, even from the community, to, since we're talking about potentially requesting this to be on public property. One of the things that I do want to stress is, this is at no cost to the town. This would all be done with private donations through contacts that Sean has and I have that can lead to transportation to get whatever piece is chosen from New York to here. Let's see, what else? I added, I included in the letter here that we've also kind of been brainstorming about turning this whole thing into a documentary opportunity, and there are one or two documentarians that are local here that we're gonna reach out to and see if they'd be willing to basically go along for the ride, and stop at various locations throughout the country, and talk to chefs, and talk to people in the culinary industry about what, what this, you know, their memories and what this would mean to them, and then culminate back here in Yountville with the installation. So, we are, you know, welcoming your feedback. The other photograph that's in the packet is just a photograph I took that was in a story in the New York Times on the website. That's a substantial piece of steel. I don't think we're looking at something quite as, as monumental as that. And I put in my report, we could, we're talking about anywhere from four to 20 feet. They offer straight steel beams to twisted steel, various things depending on our, our space and our design interests. So, with that, I would encourage either Counsel, or if we may have Sean make a comment to extend the report, if he had something to add.
Sean?
Hi. I came up with this idea about a year ago, I saw it on the news back east, and then, you know, I mentioned it to John, and John has kind of spearheaded this whole thing from day one, and I've kept him in the loop, and, you know, living in New Jersey for 25 years, I'm very familiar with the World Trade Center. I've been there. And when I saw this, there was a place in Pennsylvania that actually picked up a piece, and a guy showed up in a pickup truck, in a flatbed truck, and they loaded an eight-foot piece. piece of steel on there, and wrapped it up in a flag, and they took it back to Pennsylvania, and they're starting to pop up all over the place. And, you know, having known somebody that was killed in the attack, you know, I thought it was like, I thought about the windows of the world, and I thought about the restaurant and how this place is, you know, I'm in the wine business, I make wine, and I go to some great restaurants, and so many people all over the country come here who've went to school in Hyde Park, or they've went to the CIA in St. Helena. And we have, I consider, I think we have the best restaurants in the country. And I think it'd be, you know, a great thing to like kind of honor those people that perished in that tower in the restaurant business, because I don't think people realize how many people were in that building. So, you know, I said I left it up to John, and I think he's done a great job, and the best we can do is, you know, it doesn't have to be something like a, stick out like a sore thumb, you know, it could be something small. And I think it'd be a good thing for the community and the restaurant people, you know. If you have any questions, you know.
Just maybe touch on the connection that you made when you were back in New Jersey.
I just did a dinner, just haven't, you know, I haven't spent 25 years in New Jersey. There's a, it's a small community town like this in Short Hills, Melbourne, and they have a nonprofit paper mill playhouse, which is, you know, and the town had just taken over it. And somebody had approached me, because they knew I was in the wine business, and asked me if I'd be willing to donate some wine for a wine dinner, which basically sold out at one of the local restaurants. And one of the people that was actually there for the dinner was Donnie DiFrancesco, who was the acting governor of New Jersey at the time of 9/11. And when I mentioned this little project that I was talking about, and he just gave me his card and says, let me know whatever you need, I'll make it happen. So we got some support from New Jersey former governor on this, and maybe we can even have him come out and do a little, you know, ceremony or something like that, you know. Any questions?
Great. Thank you for your comments. Does anyone have any questions for Sean? Thanks, Sean.
All right. Thanks.
Is anyone from the public wishing to comment on this matter this evening?
Hello. Rob Winerberg, 58 Bergen D Way. Just oddly enough, I've had an interest in this since 9/11. I did a lot of work with firefighters, and obviously they were integrally involved in the 9/11 attacks. And soon as I heard that these were available, I started thinking about, how could I get involved with that? I haven't been involved with John or Sean here, and I think what they're doing is fantastic. I think the aesthetic really fits in with town. You see the other art we have. We have a lot of different metal pieces in town. I think it's something that could be really fantastic here. I love the idea of, you know, doing a documentary, involved with it as well. And I think it could really fit well with the art we're doing, because I think there's kind of natural art and man-made art, and this is kind of a mix of the two. So I just want to say, you know, as a vice chair of the Yountville Arts Committee, I definitely think this is a fantastic opportunity for us and would fully support it.
Good. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Judith Caldwell, 6880 Jefferson Street. When John first talked to me about this, I couldn't help but think of what a wonderful aesthetic endeavor might be created around this, and what a wonderful community event might come together because of it. And then I went on to think that art then, or things like this that enhance and enrich in an aesthetic way, would then cause community to come together. So how could anyone deny something like this would be beyond me? Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Councilmember Mueller?
I think this is, well, let me just back up. I was in Washington DC on September 11th, and I actually was an eyewitness to the attack on the Pentagon. So this is, brings back a lot of emotions to me, and I think it's a really great thing to do. Have we also, maybe you've already considered, you know, having it near the fire department or up at the vets home? Have those been talked about? And the other places, I think you're looking at, depending on the size, look good too, but those might be possible things to consider as well.
We have, we have talked about it, and as I mentioned a little bit about Veterans Memorial Park, we feel like this is a separate memorial effort, that Vanderlei Park is a standalone park as well, and it really is representing the volunteer firefighters and the tradition that that fire station had there on that site. And so we really don't want to merge or dilute those memorials. And at the veterans home, same thing, that we feel like this is really in honor of the folks that are tied to the culinary industry that we're so tied to here. So it feels right to have it either at or near the community center, I think, because it really is kind of our core.
Councilmember Tilton?
I'm going to agree that this brings up more emotion than I thought. My wife just walked in, in the back of the room. I lived in Manhattan on 9/11, and my wife and I worked for a company. I was in graduate school at Columbia. We worked for a company that had almost a dozen people who killed in the windoes in the world on 9/11. So for this to be, for this to be in Yountville would be a great honor. I would drive the truck myself. So I, I would like to see it as much as possible, I think, in the center of town. As Sean said, it wouldn't be an eyesore. I think if we had a, if we had this, it wouldn't be an eyesore. I'd like to see something as substantial as possible. I think some of the sites that have been suggested are a good idea, but needless to say, I support this.
Thank you.
Louis, being there, I know that's tough to do. I commend you for what you said. Yeah, I think this is something that I don't think any one of us will forget where we were that day, any more than you will when, if you're old enough, when the space shuttle went up, where you were when John F. Kennedy was killed. And I think it's very appropriate.
Well, I hope you'll consider proceeding with this endeavor with all your strength and emotion behind you, because I think it's really important, and there's probably, there's hundreds of thousands of places that are appropriate, but none more appropriate than Yountville. And I'd like to see a piece, a substantial piece, come back to Yountville, and we'll find the perfect place for it.
I appreciate the guidance, and actually, I was worried when I was talking to Sean about how large a display did we want to do. I didn't want it to be, you know, too overwhelming, and now I have a feeling that we might have been thinking a little bit, you know, more understated. So I'll keep the council and the community, you know, we'll keep everybody informed on how we're proceeding, but I appreciate the support.
Okay. Go get them, Sean. And 13 staff informational reports, is there anything we need to bring to the public's attention?
Well, before Public Works Director speaks a little about PG&E transmissions, parking's a big issue, and I'm pleased to report that two parking spaces have opened up on Washington Street, opposite Hurley's on the railway inside as part of the relocation of the bus stop. Again, this is part of the town's practice of taking a strategic look at our own real estate that we have control and making sure that where appropriate, we try to improve on parking. So we'll see two more new parking spaces to use in the heart of the downtown area right there.
Okay. How about those natural gas transmission lines?
Yeah, it is unfortunate, what did happen on September 9th, I believe. Our point presentation will show you. All right. Next slide. It was September 9th, there was a 30-inch transmission line which carried natural gas to the city of San Francisco that exploded. There were seven deaths, 37 homes destroyed, and it's still under investigation, so there's not much information that we can share at this time about what was the cause. In the town of Yountville, this is a map of the town, north is to the left, Highway 29 is the bottom, and Washington Street is the former highway before Highway 29 was built. There is a 6-inch transmission line which was built in the 1930s in Washington Street. This is a 6 inches, so it's not as high a pressure, it only serves Yountville. And there is a plan to abandon the portion, let's see, from, well, essentially, it's going to be the north end of town back towards Humboldt. So this portion to the north would be removed from service. And then there are distribution lines to the homes and businesses within town, but these are the transmission lines. The major transmission line is on the west side of the highway, and that does serve up valley, it's a 10-inch transmission line. The Department of Transportation has a database that has all the transmission lines in the United States listed. The transmission line on Highway 29 is in very good shape, there have been no problems. And the line on Washington Street was recently repaired within the last year, but because of that repair, they do want to abandon that portion and then just have distribution systems north of there. So that's sort of the current locations in Yountville. PG&E does have a program for inspections, maintenance, repair, and replacement. Obviously, it's getting a lot more attention right now, but this is essentially how they create their capital improvement program, and it's their very large service area through probably two-thirds of the state of California. But they are actively, you know, working to get those problem areas replaced. I mentioned a leak that was repaired up on North Washington Madison. And I want to take this opportunity to do two things. One, people can get more information about their house or their business, and is there a transmission line or a gas line near them by calling the number here, which is 888-743-7431. And that was set up for customers to call with their account number and then get information specifically about their property. But I also want to take this opportunity to mention the 811 service. This is, you know, sort of like a 411 of, you know, utilities. Contractors call this number, and property owners can call this number. So if you're planting a tree, or you're putting in a service lateral, if you're going to be digging in your property, you want to know where those undergrounds lines are, not just gas, but also sewer, electrical, things like that. So contractors have been really good about calling this number. Our approach requires them to call this number before they dig. We put on all our plans and all our specifications, but just want to take this opportunity to let property owners know that if you're doing work on your property, to definitely call this number. So with that, that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions?
Does council have any questions for staff? Does anyone from the public have any questions for staff?
Hi, I'm Marita Dornbeck, 1870 Oak Circle. I'd like to know if they abandoned that piece of the pipe, how do they then get the gas, do they, are they going to put a new pipe in or go around it, or what's going to happen?
In Washington, there's a parallel system of distribution and transmission. The transmission line is the high pressure which serves the town, and from there, there's pipelines that branch off that are smaller pipes that serve homes and businesses. So they would abandon the transmission line, but still have the distribution line to the homes and businesses.
I'm sorry, I'm still not understanding, how can they then pipe off of it if it's not, if they've abandoned it?
Because they're going to make connections to, sort of like having two water lines. You have a main transmission line and then a parallel distribution line that goes to each houses. So the transmission line is mostly for moving natural gas through town, doesn't have a lot of connections to it. But where they do have connections, that's where they regulate the pressure and make it a lower pressure and put it in just parallel pipes that go to individual homes and businesses.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. No further questions? We will move on to...
We have a verbal presentation on the farmhouse status.
Oh, okay.
As you're aware, the farmhouse at the Yountville Inn Affordable Housing Project is required to be preserved and incorporated into the project, and they've submitted plans prior to the building permit being issued on that house. And we wanted to make sure the house is being restored in a manner consistent with the way it is now. And they've shown on the plan actually upgrading the windows and doors to wood, double-hung windows, wood doors with divided lights. They're rebuilding the front porch, they are reusing the redwood siding on it, re-roofing with the same material that's on there now, comp shingle. And a couple of changes, they're rerouting the upper, the second floor staircase, and that's pretty much it. Otherwise, they're retaining the footprint and some interior wall changes to set the rooms up per the approved plan back when they were approved originally.
Good. Good. Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have one. Were they, are they able to reuse any of the existing windows?
Well, a lot of the existing windows are single pane, and the wood's pretty, in pretty bad condition. A lot of them are aluminum windows. Actually, they have slider doors on there that would be inconsistent with that period. It's really, the windows they're putting back in are Marvin, double glazed, energy efficient, much better windows.
Okay, thanks. Are you going to have a written report on that progress, or just?
Well, they will, yeah, we have the plan, and they, I can go over the plan with you if you care.
No, I'm just wondering if we're going to have a, I guess it'll be documented because we have this on tape.
Yep. And they're nearing completion of the inn units, so they will need to have the affordable housing units complete within six months of when they occupy the inn. So they're, that's very doable to improve the farmhouse, and the rest of the units, they've been progressing on the other clusters.
Thanks.
I also think it's really important that the project applicant, I think, listened to the council. I think the product that staff has received shows that they heard your input, and they put together a very sound renovation of that particular farmstead, consistent with the application which was originally submitted, and I think we need to acknowledge that and do want to appreciate that, and we can provide another periodic update. But we anticipate at this point in time that they will move fairly quickly with that, and they've got about six months with which to finish everything after their opening of the hotel. So they've got some work to do, but the good news is, as Bob said, that they've made significant progress on the other units, and I think they'll be able to put their attention right to the, to the completion of the farmhouse. And more importantly, we can button up the construction on the south end, and the folks at Rancho, or excuse me, Gateway Mobile Home Community, I'm sure will appreciate a little bit of a return to normalcy in that area.
Yeah, I'm sure they will too.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Bob, if I could just ask, we did have Wendy Ward from Preservation Napa Valley and also Napa Valley Landmarks representatives during this process. If you could just make sure to kind of keep them in the loop with the information so that they know that those levels of renovation are happening, because I know there was great concern about to what level. Because I know there was great concern about to what level the farmhouse was going to be maintained. So if you could just, whenever there's something either written, or if you can just reach out to close that information loop with them, I think the council will appreciate that.
Good. Any more comments? Okay, is that all staff, all staff reports? Council reports, NCTPA?
NCTPA met, I guess about two weeks ago, two items that were discussed. One is, NCTPA has a two-year grant, about half a million dollars, that deals with farmworker shuttles. And they've gone to an extensive amount of effort to make this program work, and honestly, so far, it's not. So NCTPA was very forthright in that, I give them a lot of credit for not trying to give too much runaround. So they're going to give that a couple more months through harvest, and if not, their intent is that this is not a program that works in Napa Valley, is they will give the money back and not waste it. So I think that's, I think that's something great to see. The second item had to do with the 29 Express, and this came up at the last council meeting. There were some ridership numbers that were circulated about the 29 Express, which goes from Calistoga, express bus stops in each city, including Yountville, goes to the Vallejo Ferry, then on to the Barge Station, I believe in El Cerrito. And the marketing efforts on that have worked. They reported between 60 and 80 riders per day. And I did ask the question, 60 to 80, as long as people are going both ways, means it's actually 30 to 40 different people. So if you consider all up and down the valley, how many people that is, I would consider it likely that the park and ride lot in Yountville will have ample extra parking. Those were the two main things with NCTPA. Let me move on to LAFCO.
LAFCO.
LAFCO, we met yesterday afternoon in the Board of Supervisors' chambers. Most substantively, we annexed some land into American Canyon. The meeting lasted, or that item lasted maybe five minutes, which is the shortest and least contentious American Canyon annexation meeting in the history of Napa County. We annexed the land that Ameri, the new American Canyon High School sits on, into the city of American Canyon, as well as the American Canyon Fire District. And there's also a parcel that's referred to as the Eucalyptus Grove parcel that is used formerly for paintball operations and has also become infamous for its cockfighting operations. That has been annexed into the city of American Canyon, and I have a feeling they have a great interest in getting that thing in shape. So those two things were undertaken. So that's, that's LAFCO.
Good. Any other reports?
Yes, Mayor. We had a meeting a week ago, Monday, Upper Valley Waste Management. Annually, we meet up at Clover Flat, so it was really nice, it happened to be 101 degrees up there, outside meeting. Fortunately, I was there early and managed to get a spot in the shade. Even a number of things were covered. One is they do send out information on a regular basis, and you'll be getting something similar to this to explain what's going on with the various Upper Valley with the waste management programs. But primarily, the meeting hinged around what's going to happen with Clover Flats there, and some of the things going on, especially with the AV32, which we've heard a lot about. And a lot of the things up there, what they're doing is now is obviously the recycling, the commercial recycling. They're also doing the methane gas, they're talking about expanding that up there. We've started the food waste program, or food composting, which a year ago, let me get this right, we had about six tons that month. The last month was 148 tons of products. So it's been very successful, and you could obviously see a considerable spike when a number of the restaurants here in Yountville came on board. So it's been quite, quite encouraging, and actually, more to come. One of the things that could be a threat to this is coming up on the election is Proposition 23. As you know, what the AV32 would sort of say, that all of your greenhouse gas emissions and everything by the year 2020 would refer, referred, or back to the levels of 1990. Proposition 23, if approved, would knock that out. It would say, well, no, we're going to put that on hold until the state has an unemployment rate of less than, I think it's 5% for four consecutive quarters, which over the last 40 years or so, they maybe added that twice. So I would encourage everybody to read that very carefully and see who's backing that proposition. And if it does, if it does pass, then it's sort of going to put a damper on a lot of the AV32 efforts, which a lot of jurisdictions have been going on, and especially this one here, as far as getting up to speed and moving ahead with it. We're, we're ahead of the curve, and hopefully, we'll be able to continue that if that does not pass. The only last thing, and there will be a new name, it is the Clover Flat. I guess it started out dumps, and now it's Clover Flat Landfill, now it's going to be the Clover Flat Resource Recovery Park. So things are getting fancier, it's still the dumps. But basically, eventually, it will turn into a park. And those of you who have been up there, it really is, it is not like your old dumps. It is a very well-run operation up there, as clean as it can be for the environment, and onward and upward. But hopefully, we'll be able to continue moving with the AV32.
Good, thank you for that report. Vice Mayor?
I just want, I wanted to acknowledge the Vintners Golf Club management. They held a car show, Hot Rods for Heroes, back on September 26th, and they raised money for the Pathway Home Program. And I wanted to acknowledge them and thank them for doing that. They, they followed up a huge car show that was held up in Calistoga the day before, and this is the first year that they did it. And they had dozens and dozens of beautiful cars there, so thanks to them. Also, thanks, I was going to bring it up when we had the entire Parks and Rec staff here, but I would say we had a very successful first wellness fair at the community center. And I believe they said over 300 flu shots and other immunization shots were given out, so that was really a great effort. Elizabeth Batari from the Queen of the Valley Wellness Center was instrumental, along with Samantha from the Park and Rec Department, helping me organize that and bringing all the volunteers together and the staff. It was really a very good event, looking forward to doing it again next year. And I saw Bob Hurley earlier, I don't see him now, I wanted to recognize him, and also Jeremy Threet, the General Manager of Bouchon, because I've talked to some local residents. I spoke with both of them, actually, and since then, followed up with some local residents, who said they are not experiencing the same employee parking issues that they had been. And Bill Dutton and I had been talking to Bob about getting his employees to use our community center lot now that it exists, and it looks like that's helping. And I know that we have to continue to monitor that, but I wanted to recognize them for actually doing something to help that part of town, so. And if you're not going to do it, a very successful Yountville Days, beautiful day, beautiful weather, a lot of great volunteers out there. So, and our Public Works team was in third place, finished on the podium in the Chili Cookoff. Ahead of both of our Public Safety teams, Cal, all of a sudden, I'm sure you were on duty and couldn't help him out, so. But congratulations to everybody involved in Yountville Days.
Yeah, thank you for that report. I'd like to thank and congratulate the town staff. They did a fantastic job planning and setting up for the Yountville Days Parade and Festival. Friday night was movie night, and I understand we had a very good turnout for that, way past my bedtime, but I did do an early, early-on drive-by and saw a nice crowd there. And then, of course, Saturday was the Chili Cookoff. A lot of great volunteers and the town staff got there to help set up, run the event, clean it up, break it down and clean it up. So it's just, the volunteer effort in this town is incredible. I mean, we have so many good people that works with the, with the town and the Chamber of Commerce to pull off these events and make them special for everyone. And I would like to just remind everyone, the, we did, the Chamber of Commerce did conduct a Meet the Candidates Forum on, just this past Thursday. And that was covered by Channel 28 TV, and it will be rebroadcast every Friday at 2:00 PM and every Saturday at 10:00 AM until the election, so. And if you don't have access to cable TV, you can, it is streaming, web-streaming live on demand at www.nappavallieTV.org. I would encourage you to check out that forum if you weren't able to attend. Just one more announcement, I know that a number of folks got a letter from PG&E and about a planned electric service interruption, and I think that was around Yount, Weber, Humboldt, and Washington Streets. And we just recently should have received, yeah, Burgundy, oh, Washington Creek Street, Weber Avenue, Jefferson Street, Yount Street, Burgundy Way, Starkey Avenue in Yountville. And that was a 12-hour planned outage. So we just recently got notice, I know I got a phone call from PG&E, and we also got a letter from PG&E stating that they had canceled that planned outage. So you don't have to make, make plans for, I think it was tomorrow, it was supposed to be tomorrow. So that's been canceled.
Cancelled or postponed is the question?
Postponed.
Well, it says canceled on the letter, but inevitably, it will be, it'll be back on again to get the work done, so. I have no more comments, any other?
Well, if I can make a comment, I don't know if this theoretically goes under future agenda items. I would like to request of the council and of the mayor, if we could, for the August 19th meeting, I'm sorry, I was late on that one. October 19th meeting, have an agenda item for what I would hope would be a presentation by our town attorney regarding some options on reopening the path behind the elementary school and Hopper Creek condominiums. And this comes, I knew this was going to happen, when the path is now open behind the Fennell Affordable Housing Project. And as Councilmember Dutton has said eloquently many times, the finest walking path in town has been closed for, how many months, you probably know by now?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two months. Well, I think it's truly now the finest walking path in town because of that connection. I had an informal conversation at Bob Hurley's place, by the way, with Matt Gorman and also Arnold, just asking them, do you think that there are some ways that we could reopen that path and not have to be presented as we were by our former town attorney with a, you have to cut it down, or you have to close the path, options? And I believe on those conversations that there are reasonable options out there, and I think we should pursue those if possible.
I'd just like to say, I wholeheartedly agree that I would like to have this conversation as soon as possible to really consider what our options are for opening the path. I really like that suggestion, Louis, thanks.
I think you have consensus.
Yes.
I have another item. Since we're talking about things, and I don't want to let this, you know, I forget exactly how long ago it was when the young lady from the Napa County tried to explain to us about the library hours. And since that day, I've heard zero, not, squat of nothing. And it's a little disturbing. John mentioned the Wellness Center, I probably had three people say, geez, too bad, I got to stand around here and wait for the library to come open at a certain time. And it, it just keeps bothering me, for the life of me, and I don't want to see it get swept under the rug. I think, you know, I think our residents deserve better, and I can't believe their explanation. I don't know where to go from here, I guess, other than shaking the trees or whoever does it, but there has to be a better way to do it, we have to be, have that thing open. It's just sad to see it close like it has been, and anything we can do to get open more hours, I would, hopefully, we could do it. And maybe, maybe there's a path we have to take, but I would hope we would do that.
Well, and to follow up on Councilmember Dutton's comments, I, first of all, I completely agree with you. And there were some comments made at the, at the candidate forum about, well, we need to find some money. I want to remind everybody that we have $17,000 sitting in our budget this year. Last year, I think it bought us six hours of time, and this year, they're going to give us 1.2 hours per week, $215 per hour. And that was a decision of, we are not going to financially waste your money. And I, I totally agree that this, I had two county supervisors say, what? I mean, are you serious, kind of thing? So I, I agree, we should continue to push this a lot.
I don't know who you talk to, I did, I had talked to Diana Dillon prior to an Upper Valley, and of course, sort of libraries are a background.
Yeah.
She tried to, in a sense, well, you know, they, you got to have experienced people there, and I said, you know, I scanned my groceries the other day down Safeway. You know, I mean, I could scan a book, and you know, I don't, it didn't take much training, so. I mean, and not belittling that, that thing, but I think there's, we're just not getting the right story, and I really think we got to shake some trees there, I really do.
Well, I would just like to add too, that I've actually talked to Mark Lewis and Bill Dodd on several occasions, and they've, they've said that the path forward is for our town manager to talk to the head of their library association. And they both almost guaranteed me that if Steve couldn't work something out, to come to them, and they would both be willing to put in political muscle to make this happen. So when you have those conversations, you've got three Napa supervisors to throw into the mix.
Well, first of all, let me apprise you, I actually met for two hours with the library director last week, trying to better understand the calculations and also our lease structure. And one of the things that we are looking at is the potential for reworking the lease in a more favorable way that can benefit some hours. So one conversation's been had, I still think the, there's a couple of things that are unfortunate. One is, we're not the operator of the library. We provide space, we, the town actually subsidizes it to a degree, but the, the county, there's a Napa City County Library System of which a portion of our property tax base goes into. And what we're really needing to do is, they've established a whole new cost allocation model, we need to stay attentive to that and their staffing. And I'm not defending their service model, so I don't want to create that, it's just that's, that's where we're at. And I'd be more than happy, as we follow up on these conversations, it may very well be appropriate, and I think Councilmember Dutton had mentioned that, that it may be that we need to have a couple of the council members and a couple of the Board of Supervisors, because I don't believe the Board of Supervisors influence. I don't, in that conversation, I think we still have some stuff on the table. We have our lease terms, and we have the fact that we have budgeted a certain amount of money. So we certainly have something to talk about in terms of improving that.
Vice Mayor?
It sounds like we've all tried to beat up our supervisors over this because it's appropriate, I think, but, you know, we were able to work with the school superintendent and the school board to keep Yountville Elementary School open. I have a hard time believing that we can't work with the Napa City County Library Group to do something similar. And the problem has been so far is they're looking at Yountville's library, just like they are every other library. This is not a county-wide branch library, but they're applying the rules and regulations as if it is. So we need to, you know, be proactive and create different rules, basically, as long as they're legal. And there have got to be different conditions than the volumes that you check out, that's just, it doesn't make sense. And as Councilmember Dutton said, the costs of operating that space, they just shouldn't be calculated the same as when you're talking about the main library. And I think they're just looking at it in a very sterile, generic way. And I know that town staff and our town manager have tried to get creative with them, but I think if we need to take a more proactive approach as a council, then it sounds like we're all on board, and we can do that.
I'm more than willing to sign up to eliminate bureaucracy if that's what it takes, so.
I think, I mean, I think that's a good example of what you guys were able to do with the schools. with the schools, you know, and I think the same approach. And, and gosh, we've certainly got some very capable people in this town, I think, that would be more than willing to assist there, work there, whatever the case may be, and I think they could, I think they're more than qualified than what people think.
So, Steve, what, I mean, other than going out and checking out books, which I highly encourage people to go to the library tomorrow and check out their maximum of 50 books, what is the next step? Because I think this is something that I feel like can just kind of drag on, and, and, I mean, there are certain issues, the cost model, the idea that the next hour costs $215. There's, there was never justification for those numbers, that the next hour would cost $215. So, what do you think the next step is? Do you think there isn't, do you have a next step right now, or do you feel like you had a conversation and you were given the answer?
Well, there's two things. One, I'm trying to establish some better understanding. Secondly, though, the, the first thing I have to point out is, the Board of Supervisors approved the cost allocation model. So, I mean, that's the model. And unless we can figure out something different, and, and that's what I'm trying to have, I'm trying to get a better understanding, for example, if we were willing to not collect our, our rent, are they willing to give us some additional hours of service? I'm, I'm trying to be, so, you know, we're working on a couple of different things, but bottom line is, if we want a different outcome, you know, if we want to be able to understand why they can't use one staff person and a volunteer, and how to structure that, I think we're going to have to have a more, a more direct and more focused conversation, because they, they run a multi-library system, and they are applying a, a rather straightforward approach, system-wide.
If I could suggest, similar to what Councilmember Chilton did with the walking path, if we could maybe agendize, even if it's one of your workshops, where we encourage the public to come in, and as, as Bill said, we have a lot of smart people out there that might be able to offer up some, just let me finish if you would please, some creative options that we can then put together in a formal letter, support, you know, from the town, from the entire council, saying, "This is an approach that we would like to pursue with you. Let's then maybe form an ad hoc committee to meet with the library people."
I think you need to take parts of those elements, Vice Mayor Donbar, because us telling the library what we think they should do to their library, we need to take a step back and say, "All right, we hear that." I think we need to invite them to, to the workshop, so that they can be a party, listen to the input that you're talking about. Because I, I think, you know, they may, you know, one, we can't, the town can't explain some of their policies and procedures, so when, when somebody offers a solution or an idea, I, I think it's appropriate that the library staff be here. I think we need to send them an invitation for that kind of a public workshop, and include the supervisors.
Well, I would, I think maybe another avenue that the council could consider, kind of going back to the school, is establishing, and maybe we could do this at the next meeting, because I know we haven't agendized this, the concept of considering a, a two-person subcommittee. I think that to sit down with, with two of the supervisors and, and the head of the library and say, "This is the couple of things we don't understand, help us understand this." Part of the problem may have been, is in the last meeting, it was a very public forum, and we're all upset about it. I know you've done that on one side, but let's add some political side to that, just to try to give it one more shot. I mean, I have some very, I'm, I'm, you know, they've got their cost allocation model, and that's great, and I understand why they have it, but that doesn't mean the next hour costs $215. I mean, this is Finance 101. So, I, I think having, so we don't get upset, and they're not here in public, and we're saying, "You're embarrassing us for building an $11 million community center and not giving us a justification for opening it for the library." We don't want to do what I just did. So, if we possibly do a subcommittee to, to help deal with that question, if you want to agendize that next time.
I'd be happy to. I just remind you, I won't be at the 19th meeting, so if you're looking for more detail, I'd be happy to put that structure together for you. It's a, and, you know, we can do that. It'd certainly be helpful, because I think, you know, trying to understand that and move the system, you know, and part of it is, they have to be able to explain their operating procedures. I'm not in a position, obviously, to explain why they're staffing, you know, what their fundamental change from their prior staffing to the new staffing. So, I think having that dialogue and trying to move it forward is very important, and that's why I want to, you know, we have been moving on it, and it is going at a slower speed than I would like.
Wendy, do you have a comment? Can you come up to the microphone, please?
I'm Wendy Robins Vogel, and I live on Creek Street. And I volunteered in the library for about eight years. And of course, it was when it was here, and we had Louise as our final librarian, who herself was not actually a qualified librarian, by the standards of whatever degree you have. She was the most qualified librarian I've ever come in contact with in my life. And she was the spirit, one of the two things, that first of all, we should all be outraged, and we should get our citizenry outraged, that we have all that we have in this pitiful little library. And I've watched children come in to that library whose parents couldn't speak a word of English, but they brought their children there after school every day. And I've watched them grow up. They would come back to Louise to get a report, information sent up to our little branch from other branch libraries, so they could write a report. And I've seen them blossom into real students and thrive on our library. I think we need to let people know, this isn't just about numbers and dollars and cents. When they asked us, would we, what would we think, I said, "We need a library that's a vibrant center, that could maybe have travel shows or have a lecture by somebody once in a while, so people can walk in town to it and, and, you know, make..." And the reason St. Helena has, as it turns out, what they do, and they do all these things, they have things on photography and so forth, is because they had a huge endowment. Apparently, St. Helena is one of the most highly endowed libraries in the United States per capita. And so, they have a different arrangement with the county, and they are apart. We can get our books back and forth and so forth, but they are actually somewhat independent. So, I think if we can work with, as you mentioned, the head librarians, as well as the, the board, but mainly, I think the policy starts in the library, and talk to them about how we want that vibrant feeling back that we had in our tiny little space, that was, it was full of life, and that's what a library has to be. I, I strongly commend you for pursuing this, and for finding out if there isn't some way, if we can fund it in our own manner, that we can make some arrangement that's separate, but still make them feel they're in control.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, that question was brought up, and I think it's a really appropriate one. The library in St. Helena is actually a City of St. Helena library. They own, maintain, staff it, and they do have a very incredible endowment that allows them to do that. And then, they have a loan partnership, so that they're part of, they are a partner in what's called SNAP, which is the Napa-Solano Interchange for Material Collections. But it is actually a standalone, a City of St. Helena operation.
Well, then, would it be too much to ask? We have CAL FIRE and the Sheriff's Quarterly Report coming up, and a resolution approving fiscal year 2010-2011 Citizens' Option for Public Safety Program, COPS.
We will have an ad hoc?
Staff report on reopening the path, pathway behind Hopper Creek, and maybe perhaps some format for approaching the library issue.
I will have the ad hoc discussion, because I think that committee then needs to work on the format, rather than trying to have the format before the ad hoc.
Okay. Establishing that ad hoc committee, then. Okay. Anything else for future agenda items? Item 16, closed session. Do we have a need for a closed session?
We do not tonight, no.
Great. Thank you. Item 17.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you next Tuesday, October 19th, at 6:00 PM.